Okay, we ready to go? Great. Let's gavel in. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting, happening today at 7:04 PM. This evening, the board entered executive session at 6 o'clock PM in the superintendent's office, 104 Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. This meeting has been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. This Board of Education meeting will be streamed live, and all community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person at the Harrison School Conference Room. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting now is compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress, Caldwell, New Jersey, Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey, and Tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office in the Harrison School Building, 104 Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey, and have been delivered to the clerk at the Borough of Caldwell and the clerk township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the role?
Yes. Student Representative Claire Kiernan.
Here.
Ms. DiMartini.
Here.
Mr. Elko.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. D'ambola.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
So you have five voting members present. We have a quorum.
Great. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, do we have any communications?
None.
Okay. So, Dr. Conklin, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Luciana Kader from the House of Responsibility and Marlena McSherry from the House of Citizenship. Luciana, did I have that correct?
Yeah.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Luciana Kader. I'm one of the leaders for the House of Responsibility.
And I'm Marlena McSherry, and I'm one of the leaders for the House of Citizenship. Today marks the first day of our Valentine's Day Spirit Week held by our own GCMS Student Council. Last week, students were able to bring non-perishable food items to donate at our local food pantry in honor of the Super Bowl. Every six items counted as one vote for a homeroom. Whichever homeroom had the most votes for the winning team would win an awesome bagel breakfast.
Starting today were auditions for our spring musical, Once Upon a Mattress. These productions help kids through all three grade levels, work together and communicate, and work with other students that they may normally not see or talk to, and together they put on a fun and creative production.
Another way students are getting involved with schools is our Battle of the Houses Read-A-Thon, which started Monday, February 6th. Over the next two weeks, students are able to read as much as they can to win house and individual prizes.
So far, the top reader in each house will win a $15 gift card towards a book at our book fair in March. The top reader in each grade will be able to take over the Instagram for a day, and Mr. Bertol will be the mascot for a day dressed as the house who reads the most minutes.
On February 8th advisory, our 7th and 8th grade students had a lesson on active listening skills. We learned about different strategies to actively listen. As active listeners, we can better communicate with peers and become good note-takers in class. Our 6th graders focused on identifying what their learning style is. We all learn differently. For example, some learn best by seeing the material, visual learners, and some learn best by hearing the information, sorry, auditory learners. Knowing your style of learning will help us improve our strategies to both learn and study.
GCMS Project Play Unified had an event on February 2nd. Our student council hosted a bookworm. Project Play Unified events are sponsored by different GCMS clubs to promote inclusivity.
The GCMS and JCHS guidance counselors met with all the 8th grade students for 9th grade scheduling the week of February 6th.
Thank you to the entire board for letting us present the school's current events. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much.
Just want to send a reminder out to the community. Kindergarten registration is open, and we encourage all families with eligible children to register as soon as possible. Please go to our website for more details. And lastly, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ayers, Principal of Jefferson School, who will be talking about one of his students, Bobby Wilson.
Right to the podium. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the board for providing time tonight to honor one of our students, Ms. Bobby Wilson. As a district, we value academic excellence, the growth mindset, community, equity, and inclusion. In Bobby's actions and accomplishments, we see all these values shining through. For those who are not aware, Bobby is a nine-year-old 4th grader at Jefferson Elementary School, here in our district, obviously. We, like many other places, the trees in our neighborhoods became infested with spotted lanternflies. The invasion of species known to wreak havoc not only at the trees, but the environment, and also a public nuisance. So much so that New Jersey launched a stomp it out campaign to encourage residents to kill the invasion's spotted lanternflies on spot, which are harmful to plants and trees. After learning of the danger the spotted lanternfly poses to trees and plants in our community, Bobby put her scientist hat on and made it her mission to try to protect her neighborhood trees using a homemade solution that would rid trees of the invasion species. It was dishwashing vinegar and water, right? I used it. Her remarkable efforts were even the subject of an article in a local newspaper, The Progress, as well as the following honors, and there was one that was just added today that was mentioned. On November 29th, Bobby was recognized by Princeton University as a promised young scientist, and they invited her to spend the day at their science labs. The Sustainability Award on December 6th, 2022 by the Caldwell Environmental Commission. Certificate of Appreciation on December 12th by the United States Department of Agriculture for her efforts in eradicating the lanternflies. A certificate of excellence and full scholarships for both Bobby and her sister Hayden from NJIT for the Center for Pre-College Programs that runs this summer. The Community Taking Care Award from Montclair's Minority Police Officer Association. Representing the 11th Congressional District of New Jersey, Congresswoman Mickey Sherrill awarded Bobby her passion for science and environmental stewardship and to thank her for her important efforts to help our community. Yale University accepted Bobby's donation of the spotted lanternfly to their research collection. The collection will be named after Ms. Bobby Wilson. Anyone that uses the spotted lanternfly specimens from that collection must credit Bobby. Just notified today, Governor Murphy will be honoring Bobby at his Black History Month event on February 21st in Trenton. I would be remiss if I did not also recognize the wonderful support Bobby received from her sister Hayden. A 9th grader at JCHS, and her mom, Ms. Monique Joseph. Who raised two amazing children who are making such a positive contribution to the community. Please help us in honoring Ms. Bobby Wilson and her family. Want to say something?
Thank you.
I'll say something really quick. I promise, just one minute. Back on, I want to say November 2nd, 3rd, something like that, shortly after the story went viral, I had to make a call that I never thought I would ever have to make as a parent. I had to call Dr. Conklin, Caitlin, Mr. Ayers, Mr. Devlin, and just explain to them what happened. And without even having to ask, I knew automatically that the girls would not only be supported, but they would be protected. And that was my number one concern, you know, especially for Hayden. She stood up. What happened to Bobby was involuntarily, but Hayden voluntarily stood up and spoke up for her sister in an environment that wasn't welcome to her. So I was worried of any backlash, whether it be from just children, just being kids. Just didn't know what the temperature would be within the school buildings, but I'm so happy to say that they were supported. Mr. Devlin was amazing. He said, "I'm not going to overwhelm her by speaking to her. Just let her know that if she needs anything," and the same thing with Mr. Ayers. So I wanted to say to everyone, you know, this was, it was a scary journey at the beginning, but the most important thing to me was making sure bigger than the media, bigger than Yale, was making sure that when they left my home, they went to their home for so many hours during the day at school that they were safe. And that was the one reason that I was able to go out and stand and speak on behalf of myself and my family, and I just want to thank Mr. Ayers. It meant so much to me. I always know that I can count on you. I'm getting emotional. This is not the first time I've had to lean on him. And he's very calm. He doesn't go crazy. You know, but I knew, I knew. He came out running one day, and he let me know that, not just as a principal, just as a human, that don't worry about Bobby. And I just want to say thank you. It means a lot.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you as a human, right? And I appreciate all of you. Just, you know, this came at the best time ever. You know, now we can talk about the awards and the happy stuff, and that's what I want Bobby to remember, not the other stuff. So thank you for choosing today. Thank you for choosing Bobby and acknowledging her, Dr. Conklin. Thank you so much. You showed up at night when you could have been at home with your family to support us. I turned around one day when Bobby was being awarded, and it meant a lot. You know, it really meant a lot. And I think it also sends a message to the community that, you know, you don't have to pick sides, but we're going to support this little girl. So thank you so much. Caitlin Jones, I love you. Just everyone, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Take a two-minute break and take some pictures, if that's okay?
I just want to say that I was trying to think of something really great to say to you today to leave you with, but I just wanted to say that I'm very big on quotes. I love to find quotes because I feel like people always say things better than I ever could. And Rosa Parks had a quote, and she said, "Each person must live as a role model for others." So Bobby, today, I thank you for being a role model, not just for people your age, but for our entire community. I thank your mom for being a role model as a mother who's strong and advocates for her children. I thank Hayden for being a role model as a sibling. I have five children. I would hope that my five children would stand by their sibling the way you stood by your sister. And I just want to thank all of you for being part of our family here. And God bless you. You deserve all of the accolades you're getting and more, sweetheart. You know what? Just Mr. Ayers, before Mr. Ayers leaves too, I just want to just say very quickly, Mr. Ayers, thank you so much for everything that you did for Monique and Bobby and Hayden. And I just want to say that, you know, we have really wonderful administrators in this district, and what you did, Monique, if you want to say something too, just go ahead.
So I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Ms. Gina was at the party. From the very minute her and Mr. Ayers, they parked together, and they made sure that Bobby was supported. They, she had a check-in with Bobby in the morning, in the afternoon. And when I was asked by family and friends, "Would you have Bobby in therapy?" And I was like, "Oh, right at school, right." And it helped, and it mattered. So I'm so sorry I left you up. You were in tech room, so I appreciate, and I love you.
I just want to say that I just think that this is really a credit to the wonderful support staff, teachers, administrators that we have in our district that don't just care about the academics. They care about our children and our families. So thank you, both of you, all of you who supported Bobby and Monique and Hayden. So thank you all.
So that concludes my report.
Great. That was a great report. Listen, it's happy, just happy stuff tonight. Okay, I have nothing for the president's report, but we have had three committee meetings that we're going to report out on. So I'll start with, let's start, Mr. Elko, yours is going to be the longest. So let's go.
I don't think so.
Well, I'm going to start with personnel. We'll do personnel, then curriculum and technology, and then we'll do finance and facilities. So Mr. D'ambola.
So for personnel, we met on February 9th at 4:00 PM here. Myself, Ms. Mack, Dr. Conklin, Ms. Jones were all in attendance. The Personnel Committee reviewed several draft proposed and other job description updates for future board approval. The committee discussed the project, the projected 23, 24 staffing requests. The committee also reviewed the hiring process, the hiring staffing goal being developed through a comprehensive equity plan, and the proposed salary for several non-certificated staff. And that's what we talked about in personnel.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Curriculum and Technology.
The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on February 9th at 3:30 in the Assistant Superintendent's Office. And present were myself, Dr. Conklin, Ms. Greenlee, Ms. Jacobs, Ms. Jones, and Mr. and Ms. [inaudible].
Ms. Bahoudin.
Ms. Bahoudin, yes. On the agenda, or a couple highlights from the agenda, we discussed the Start Strong presentation that Ms. Jones, she previewed the recording of the district's Start Strong presentation, and that's now posted on our website for everybody to view. We have an update on the Performing Arts expansion. Mr. Babish is planning lessons in the spring to introduce our upper elementary students to the performing arts, which is really exciting. So we're excited to facilitate that down to our upper elementary grades. And then finally, tickets to Grease went on sale today. It's our high school performance. We're going to be announcing the dates as it gets closer. Another exciting component is we're going to welcome some of the Grease cast members to the core meeting to discuss and talk about and promote the play, which we're really excited about.
Yeah. Great. Any questions or comments? Nope. And Mr. Elko.
Okay. And I apologize for the mask. I'm getting over a sickness right now. But we had our facility finance meeting on January 31st. It was Dr. Conklin, McCarthy, D'ambola, and myself. You can see in the agenda a handful of the items that were approved. So we have, there's, I think, two kind of servers that we have, or rooms full of servers that we have in the district. One's at high school, one's at the middle school. The HVAC installation and equipment is for the high school version, so we can make sure the servers don't overheat and we don't have any kind of outages. We also have purchase of Promethean boards. So these are very large boards. They're interactive, they're touchscreen. This is actually something, I want to say it was in one of the first few months of Dr. Conklin coming to district, he showed us these Promethean boards. We're like, "All right, we'll see what they do." And apparently, they caught on like wildfire. I told the story before. Julian and I went to the middle school last year for Make a Difference Day, and two different classes of kids voluntarily said, "We love the Promethean boards. We want more of them." So this is the third and final wave for a while, and I believe we think just about anybody who, any school, any classroom that wants one now has one. Is that right, Dr. Conklin?
Right. Any classroom that wanted one has one. We have almost one in every classroom in all the elementary schools. And the middle school has several that are actually installed on the, actually in the classrooms and several on carts as well. And I think every classroom at the high school has one in the math class, and we're adding another 18-plus, I think, at the high school disco round.
We've come a long way from the overhead projectors that some of us used to have to live with. So, and it's important to note that there has been these expenditures on technology. We've gone from kind of a one-to-one district to a true one-to-one district plus, right? With all these different advancements, which is great. Also on the item, very exciting, the renovation of the auditorium seats at Grover Cleveland Middle School. So it's another expenditure. If you've been to the auditorium in the middle school, you know that is very much needed. And that's something that we've been looking at. Both auditoriums, frankly, the high school auditorium and the middle school are going to be renovated in the coming years. Next week, or next meeting later this February, we're going to have the auditor come and present on the fiscal year 22 audit. Spoiler alert, it's all good stuff. So you can, we'll have the auditor present, I think, at the meeting, right? Yep. And then finally, in our facilities, you're going to see some of the ways that our district helps support the community. You're going to see that we let the Girl Scouts use our building. We have the HSA car wash for the 5th graders at Washington. The rec programs are going to be throughout all of our schools. And most near and dear to my heart, every third Saturday of May, the Education Foundation holds their 5K, their annual 5K. It's here, it's not here. It's at the high school. You run up Westville, around Grover Cleveland Park, you come back down. It's a fantastic experience. I would encourage anybody who's interested to look up the Caldwell West Caldwell Education Foundation and sign up for that third Saturday in May. And that's all I got. You're right, I was the longest.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Yeah.
Just a report from the high school.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Student Representative Claire Kiernan will give her report from James Caldwell High School.
We're currently in the third marking period, which is excited. Oh, more than half the year's over, which is kind of weird. But looking forward to the summer. I want to recognize a few of my classmates, most of, all of whom I know very well. They're all great girls. They were recently awarded Scholastic Art Regional Awards. Hannah Morgan received the Gold Key Certificate for Mixed Media Presentation. She had little stop-motion videos. They were really cute. You can find them. I know they were sent out to high school parents, but I'm sure there's some way to dig them up if you're interested. Marissa Brown has received an honorable mention for the same award for an illustration she did by hand. And then Alexandra Lee received the Silver Key Recognition for a research paper she submitted.
Wow.
Very exciting. This Thursday, the 16th, our National Honor Society and Interact Club will be having a blood drive via the Red Cross. It'll be held from 2:00 to 7:00 at the high school. And if you're looking for any more information or you want to get involved, you can contact Ms. Baut at Cbaut, B-A-U-T, at cdcboe.org. And then also, we have the Music Marathon coming up on February 25th. This is a great event. It lasts from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and all the different music clubs and arts organizations all have different presentations throughout the day. And there will also be little snippets of the Grease musical as a little teaser.
A teaser.
They're all very talented, so it's fun to watch. You can bounce from room to room, see all kinds of different students performing. That's all I got.
That's great. That's great. Yeah, the Music Marathon is really incredible. If you've never been to it, it's a great day. You can pay like a family price and go in, hear the kids. They're so talented. And like I said, there'll be like highlights from Grease, and it's just really fantastic. We have such a rich music program at the high school, and it's really bounced back very lovely from COVID. So encourage everyone to buy tickets and come support our music students. That's Saturday, February 25th. Okay, so let's get through some business. Let's do approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Brian, will you take the role, please?
Yes. Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'ambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Okay, now we're going to move on to public comments on agenda items only. Public participation shall be governed by the following. The participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration and may only address items on the agenda at this point in the meeting. Purchasement may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Just as a reminder, boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or a cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's comments if it exceeds the allotted time or is objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. Would anybody like to comment about items on the agenda? One's going twice. We'll close public comments on agenda items and move on to curriculum and technology, please.
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools' motions to approve items A through H on this evening's agenda.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Brian.
Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'ambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Personnel.
Upon the recommendation, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools' motion to approve items A through M under certificated and items A through E under non-certificated staff.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Brian, can you take the role, please?
Yes. Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'ambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso. Ms. Grossa.
Yes.
5-0, motion carried.
Okay, Finance?
Motion to approve items A through G under Finance, and item A and B under Facility.
Can I have a second, please?
I will second it.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. De Marti, uh, Ms. De Martini.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambo.
Yes.
Ms. Grossa.
Yes.
5-0, motion carried.
Okay, and then last, Policy?
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools' motions to approve items A and B on this evening's agenda under Policy.
Great. Brian?
Do you have a second, a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
I'll second it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. De Martini?
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambo.
Yes.
Ms. Grossa.
Yes.
5-0, motion carried.
Okay, now we're moving to the public comment portion of the meeting. Public participa, I'm okay, right, Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you. Public participation shall be governed by the following. The participant must be recognized by the presiding officer, must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Again, as a reminder, that boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, not to debate issues, or enter into a question and answer session, or cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening. Boards respond to public comment by seeking additional information, or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's comments if it exceeds the allotted time or is objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. Would anybody like to come to the mic for public comment? And this can be any item on or off the agenda. Small house tonight. And I'm going to close this, uh, public comment session, and I'm going to ask for a motion to enter executive session in the Superintendent's office at approximately 7:35 PM. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks. Yeah. And a second?
I'll second it.
Right. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Serious, I'm getting my time.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Abstentions, motion carried.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.